It is Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. And in place of invocation this evening, I would like everyone to take a moment of silence and whether you pray or thoughts, but for the Mormon families that were murdered down in Mexico, this, you know, I mean, mothers and children, I mean, it's very depressing and it's sad, and please, we'll take a moment of silence before we have our roll call. Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Trustees head?
Here.
Leaf?
Here.
Matts?
Here.
Nelson?
Pike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustees Zeiss?
In here.
Thank you. Item two is review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of October 1, 2019. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of October 1, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Any amendments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Item three is comments from the floor. Opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. And usually this, you know, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, I'm sure there's a lot of people here, that there's items on the agenda. We would like you to discuss it, or to make your statements now, so that we can proceed through the rest of the agenda. So, anyone that wants to start out with, make the board aware of things going on, please step up to the podium. You've got like, three minutes, and let us, you know, where you're from, and what's your, you know, your address and your name, please. So, Lee?
I'm Lee Halverson. I own the Village Inn in North Hudson. 723 Sixth Street North, Highway 35 North, same deal. In regards to, I was just made aware today, that the QuickTrip is applying for a Class A liquor license. Meaning, they can sell liquor. It's not just beer. Beer is a Class B license. Class A means they can sell liquor. I just would like to, I know there's no ordinance, I don't think, about how many Class A licenses can be within a certain amount feet from another. Liquor licenses, that has to be by population. How many licenses are dealt out by population? Here, we don't have an ordinance. I'd like to propose that we maybe do one. But in the meantime, I don't think there's been any economic impacts on this liquor license, or this Class A license that's been proposed here. I know it'll affect, it doesn't affect me very much. Mine is relatively small. But it is a dent. I know the liquor store is another, is another story. That, I think, will hurt them immensely. I would like the board to either table the issue, and do an economic impact study on how much this actually does affect. I haven't been contacted. I doubt Cozy Corner's been contacted. I doubt Mama Maria's. I doubt the liquor store, as far as just rubber stamping and approving this because you can. Because there's no ordinance against it, but because you can, doesn't mean you should. So, that's my, that's my proposal towards this. At least take time, instead of just rubber stamping this approval tonight, to see how this actually does affect our businesses.
Thank you, Lee. Okay. We've got other folks out in the...
So, my name is Kendra Grams. I live just across the way, 710 St. Croix Street North. And I wanted to just speak in favor of this board appointing a representative to the Hudson Area Library Board that supports the library's mission to be a resource for all members of the community, to engage with diverse perspectives. I understand that the recent representative floated a proposal that included advocating for some limited perspectives, among them, a biblical worldview and the Ten Commandments. I also happen to be a Christian pastor, so you can imagine, I don't have any issues with people engaging with the Bible or the Ten Commandments. I do think, though, that that is done in faith communities, and is a personal choice. And the priority of the library is to make sure all can engage with those diverse perspectives. And so, it's my hope, now raising my children in this community, that the library will continue to be that place where I can take them and expose them to people who think differently, and we can talk about what that means. And to do that, we need representation that's advocating for the library to be able to live out that mission, to represent the great diversity we have in this community and in the wider world. So, I wanted to advocate for you all appointing someone that will, will do that going forward.
Thank you. Next.
Stan, when is there going to be an opportunity to talk about the depiction of the holiday lights?
You write it out.
Very good.
My name is Ken Walter, and I'm at 202 Seventh Street North. And as, if you've probably already figured out, I'm here to talk about the policy on the part of the North Hudson Village Hall that was enacted in September of last year to allow for the depiction of holiday lights at Pepperfest Park. I want to thank the board for this opportunity to speak this evening. And I wanted to kind of touch upon some of the points that I'd like to talk about in the brief time that I have here this evening. You're in receipt of a letter, I believe, that I would have written, as well as a copy of a petition containing signatures from a number of residents here in North Hudson. And my letter is, I'd like to reiterate, has three basic points to it. The first point is that holiday displays are optional to the core of North Hudson's Village, North Hudson's Village mission. The second one I'd like to talk about would be that the policy could very well be deemed unconstitutional, litigated in a court of law. And the third one is, is that the policy, as it's written, as, and it is enacted, could very well be divisive to the community itself. In preparing for tonight, I had an opportunity to go out to the North Hudson Village Hall's website. And I acquainted myself, really kind of for the first time, with some of the core missions of the village. Finance Committee, the Planning Commission, the Park Board, Public Safety Committee, and others. These constitute, as we see it, legitimate functions of village government. Everyone wants the snowplow, the leaves picked up. It's great when we get the email alerts, when there's a bear sighting in the Village of North Hudson. And it's, these all constitute what we would see as being legitimate functions of the city. That said, there's nothing in federal, state, or municipal law that directs that the Village of North Hudson shall take any role to allow for accommodations of sponsor holiday displays. Last year's policy change was optional. Further, as we, as one trustee duly warned last September, such policies can open a can of worms. And as Mr. Mahler noted, they nearly always cause community protest. In watching the video of last September's meeting, there is what I think might have been a misconception over Supreme Court rulings as it pertains to holiday lights. I believe there was an impression that was conveyed that the Supreme Court, in their two rulings, has kind of issued sort of a carte blanche approval of holiday depictions. When in fact, the two main rulings that took place, County Valagany versus the ACLU and Lynch versus Donnelly, kind of sent mixed messages. Some people have described, "It's a hot mess." They've kind of said two things at once. But in both cases, the words "each government practice must be judged in its unique circumstance" to determine whether it constitutes an endorsement or disapproval of religion. To my reading, and I'm a layman, I'm not an attorney, the courts over the years have had many opportunities to rule on this topic, and they kind of look for three basic things as it pertains to displays. Is the scene or symbol located inside or at the entrance of a core government building, such as a city hall or a courthouse? The Supreme Court, in fact, has ruled that the government may not, may not display nativity scenes at the entrance to core government buildings. Number two, is it located in the front of a core government building? Is it a high-traffic area? Is it busy street intersection? And number three, is there a sign associated with the display signifying its owner? North Hudson Village Hall and Pepperfest Park are materially indistinguishable. One has an address of 247th Street North, the other one has an address of 241 Seventh Street.
Those are inaccurate, as are some of your other comments, but I'm going to allow you to go on for just another second. We've read most of this stuff right now, and, and as you've explained, but please, you know, try to stay within the three minutes.
Okay.
The addresses are not, your addresses are inaccurate.
What are the addresses?
Listen.
400 Seventh Street North.
And the other address?
The park doesn't have an address, because there's no mailing address. And it would be on the other side if it's a, you know, 401, but that's immaterial right now.
Yeah, I'll agree.
Please finish.
I'll concede the point. Maybe I have the addresses wrong, but I think what we can agree is that the two addresses, the two slots of land are materially indistinguishable. To the passerby, one cannot tell one from the other. I'm going to cut to the quick. Seeing as how my time is...
Appreciate it.
When I drove by North Hudson Village Hall on December 16th of last year at dusk, I was out to pick up Christmas ornaments for my wife. And when I drove by Village Hall, I'm just going to state it, I felt like I was kicked in the gut. I felt as if I'd been betrayed by my own government in this regard. Let me put it another way. I felt as if I had no recourse. I felt as if what was done was certainly in violation of the United States Constitution. And I'm going to call upon this board this evening to go back to the way that it was before. What happened in September of last year was optional. It didn't need to be done the way that it was. And I thank you.
My name's Deborah Monika, and I'm from 207th Street North in North Hudson. And I too was offended by the Kresh presentation on government property. I don't argue with people's opportunities to express religion, but as the pastor pointed out, you have your place of worship, you have your own home, you have your windows, wherever you would like to put something up. The second point I would make is that there is a date discriminant point for putting up these items, which dictates pretty much which holiday a person would put up a display for. And I find that offensive. I think it is elitist for a population, specific population of people. So, on that note, I am very, I am requesting that you take a very hard look at what you're doing. The Constitution is the law of the land, and it does indicate that there cannot be, there needs to be a separation of church and state. And that is for the purposes of the multiplicity of our organizations within the United States. Secondly, the, the problem that I see is that we already have a lot of polarizing issues within our United States, and I don't think we need to throw something else in the face of anybody. I too support the idea of a person who would be more open in their ideas with regards to the library. I had applied at one time and was told that there was somebody in that position. I was never contacted then after as to the position opening up. And I think it is important that we get somebody in there that will be open to the ideas that represent the entire community and not a secular group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Deborah.
Anyone else? Okay. And there was, thank you for the lead-in, Deb, because the next item on the agenda is reconsideration of the Library Board Representative, Robert Sizik, and possible appointment of a new representative, discussion, and possible actions. Now, I will, you know, let everyone know that Robert has, I had a talk with him, we, the board did not have any idea, just, you know, to quell rumors around there, that we had any idea that he was going to propose these agenda items to the library. Once I saw the proposed agenda, I had a meeting with Bob and explained to him that you really needed to run this across to anybody before anything was done. So, the board was not aware and was not in support of these items. I don't want everybody to know that. It's, it's, and I have a new representative that I have a fair chance, I think, that everyone will agree with. And Tracy is here. I don't know if we need to have her come up right now, but, but I, Tracy Whitley is my candidate for the...
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. But Tracy has expressed interest. She sent a nice letter to the board to explain why she's interested. And if the board would like, I would have Tracy come up and just say a few words if you would care to.
Sure.
And, and then we'll discuss possible action, I guess.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Tracy.
So, my name is Tracy Whitley. I think I know some of you. I live at 317 Station Lane North in North Hudson, of course. And I would be proud to be the representative from North Hudson on the library board. There were a couple of reasons in my note to stand in the board that I, I mentioned. The first is that I think a library is an important part of the community, and from children and teens to senior citizens. I think the library can bring people together through access to books, and computers, and learning opportunities. I know every year I go to the, the swan program, where they take people on a walk down to see the swans. So, I really support the library personally and as a parent. I was very involved in the parent-teacher organizations at North Hudson Elementary and at the Hudson Middle School. I was a softball coach and volunteer at the swim team. And then, I love to read, so my husband can attest that my favorite vacation is reading. Because it's the only time I have time to not do anything else, so when I go on vacation, I bring a stack of books. I think, I've lived in North Hudson for 17 years, but I've also been coming to North Hudson since I was a small child. My grandparents had a cabin on the St. Croix River, so I spent my summers here.
Nice.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Any, well, just a second. Any questions or anything from the board?
No. Do you want a motion to approve?
Ah, that'd be my next thing.
I move to approve the appointment of Tracy Whitley to the library board.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Lori. And Tracy, you can, if you want to sit around for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome, but...
We got to vote.
If we got to vote, we're going to do that, but I just wanted to be able to...
Well, you're already like, you're already moving to...
No, I, you know I don't like voting.
I know. That's why I wanted to make sure you did it.
But I vote never election, so that's, that's, that's kind of a joke. Okay. So now, the motion made and seconded, and it's not a spending issue, so all in favor of Tracy Whitley being the new representative to the library board for the Village of North Hudson, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done, unanimous? Congratulations, Tracy. Okay. I think after this one, it's clear. Item five, review of temporary holiday display policy, discussion, and possible action. Okay. I'm going to, before we make a motion or anything like that, the, the intention last year for the holiday display was for that citizens to be able to put holiday, you know, however they celebrate, in the village park. The only persons that put in for the application or decided to decorate last year were the people with the nativity scene. There was ample opportunity, it was a short window, but they are the ones, they petitioned, and the hope was that we would have people from all denominations and/or celebrate or not, I mean, that they could put up a display, whether, if it's a Christmas tree, candy canes, however they display, you know, or show their interest. As far as Mr. Walters with the public parks, if you would look at Chippewa Falls, Wisconsin, one of their biggest parks in Chippewa Falls is called Christmas Village during the holiday season. If you go to Red Wing, they have also one of their parks that is decorated, there's thousands and thousands of lights, and from every denomination in those parks. Duluth has a generous display. All these folks, it is on public parks, but it is non-denominational, so you can put, you know, if you're a festivus, or whatever it is, we, we were not having a problem, we were just hoping that we would get more people involved. The Village of North Hudson is a small community, yes. We don't have a lot of stuff going on, that's a fact. But we, the Pepper Festival is working on, or the, they're working on building a community center, which would, you know, be in the Iverson House right behind us. And that community center will be available for rent, you know, or for people to be able to have parties, whether they're holiday parties, reunions, birthday parties. But in, during the, the holiday season, I would thought it would be great to be able to have a lighted park, that people, when they're having their party at, you know, there would be a, I think it would be, you know, something that does bring the community together, or is something to be celebrated. That said, you know, I mean, it was just, you know, Deb brought up the deal that it doesn't include the, you know, the whole holiday season, or there might be some exclusion. Most of the other cities in villages or places that have public displays, they start the, you know, the weekend after Thanksgiving, which is kind of the unofficial kickoff of the, you know, Christmas and/or holiday season, whatever you, you know, want to call it. I am hoping that this year, there would be more people, you know, and, and it's going to be up to the board to vote to say whether we continue to allow decorations there or not. I would, I would make a motion that we move, you know, we open it up to the weekend after the Chris, or after Thanksgiving, and go to the 2nd of January, right after New Year's. And if you want, you know, I mean, to put up decorations, I think it would be great. I think it brings the community together. If you've got businesses, or if you've got families, a lot of places have decorations where their family members have passed on, and they bring the decorations that they were favored of, and put them in the parks as a remembrance to a family member. So, that's, you know, it, we, this is, we are not endorsing a, any religion. That is, we are very much aware of the legal implications of that. It was, you know, unfortunate that we didn't have more people, you know, put, you know, decorations out. It was the first year we tried it. Hudson is, is expanding their Christmas decorations down in, more into the, the lakefront park, the Banshell area, and to increase their, you know, holiday spirit and/or whatever. Hudson is ra, is listed as number nine on the State of Wisconsin Christmas-friendly cities. So, it's not, we're not going over or above what, you know, we are allowed to do. We are not the village, the public works, we do not do any of the work out there, it's strictly up to the individual residents of the village. So, I made a motion to extend the hours, or extend the days to the end of, or from the weekend of, after Thanksgiving, through the 2nd, or the weekend after New Year's. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brian, discussion?
I don't think we should be playing in this arena, and I said it last year, for this reason. There needs to be clear separation. Faith communities, people have their own yards, they can put decorations up. I don't think it's our place. I think some of the examples that you cited, in terms of other communities, have parks that not, are not adjacent to their village hall. I think optics are a lot of the issue here, because when somebody drives by that hasn't been watching this on TV, hasn't been paying attention to local government, it's a lot of our residents, don't do that.
Unfortunately.
They, optics, I know, but optics are everything, so when you drive by and you see that, it says something to them. So, I, I don't think we should be playing. I said it last year, and I'll say it again.
Well, thank you.
I think that two strong arguments that were presented tonight by community members was that indistinguishable property argument, as well as the date discrimination. When I looked at the examples online, they were pretty clear that they were sponsored by Rotary Chamber of Commerce, so there was that distinguishing factor about the sponsorship. And, and with the adjacent park property to the village hall, I think that that is a strong argument.
Pepperfest Park's also not a rentable park.
What?
There's two parks in the village that are rentable, that people can use, and Pepperfest is not one of them.
We're, but we're not renting?
Well, we charge them for the electricity.
Well, that's, that's just recouping...
I know.
Our cost.
I know. But they're using it.
Okay.
So...
Just to be clear, this motion is to extend the days, right?
That's my motion, was to extend the dates.
Okay. So, I want to be clear in that.
Okay.
And one more comment with that, again, with that date discrimination, it is a certain time of year, rather than it being open all year. I, I think there is reason to argue about that date discrimination piece.
Okay. Brian, any?
I guess a couple of things come to mind, so, there are people that might not understand that there is a park sitting next to us, is one of your arguments, so you would be okay with it in another park?
Still, you have, again, this date discrimination piece.
Leaving that one aside.
I, I still have a problem with it, yes.
Because of the date discrimination?
Yes, because it is clearly a Christmas season that we're talking about here.
If the board said they can decorate any time of the year, you'd be okay with that?
I would be open to, maybe, it, it depends on how it's presented, but that's not what we're talking about tonight. Tonight, we're talking about a very specific time. That's the motion that's being proposed.
I know, but I'm trying to understand the objections. If it was open all year round, somebody could go decorate on the 4th of July and have a 4th of July celebration.
The objections are pretty clearly stated. I think that the pastor that presented about that houses of worship, your personal space, your home, all appropriate. that houses of worship, your personal space, your home, all appropriate places, and, and it's that piece of an appearance that it's a government-endorsed religion.
I think, you know, one thing that's been done in, in communities where this issue, and if there's confusion between whether it's government-sponsored or private, is you put up a sign that says, you know, "These displays are not endorsed by the Village of North Hudson," or something to that effect, so you, you know, so you can separate that confusion.
On websites, they are pretty clear that it was the Rotary Club or the Chamber of Commerce that was supporting the displays.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you could put a sign up, you know, "These displays are brought to you by the residents of North Hudson and are not endorsed by the village," or...
Or each individual permit, or person that wants to, you know, pull a permit, they, they have their name or whatever, or sponsored by, right on the display. If, if that's what you, I mean, if that's a hanging point, uh, but, uh, points, uh, anything else?
I guess, um, since we're extending the hours, that's the point of this thing. That's why I keep asking the question about if it was allowed all year long.
Well, I mean, if you, if you want, if we wanted to have it for other holidays, to decorate for another holiday, I wouldn't have an objection to that.
There are holidays throughout the year for various groups, for sure.
What's that?
There's, there's holidays that are celebrated by various groups throughout the year, for sure.
And I would, you know, and that's what I'm trying to do, was, you know, I thought with the intent is to allow people to, you know, break, come together as a community and celebrate these holidays. It just happens that the Christmas holiday season is one with probably the most decorations. If they wanted to do, uh, Halloween down here, whatever, have a haunted park, I mean, that would be, you know, something that we could entertain, but, uh, this was brought up as far as, you know, some local residents wanted to have, you know, something for the village. I mean, otherwise, the village, there's not much going on, I mean...
In my neighborhood, there's lots of lights.
Well, there's lots of lights all over the town, but City of, City Hall of Hudson has decor, it has Christmas lights on the stoop going up there, and the Christmas, and the trees going up to the house.
They don't have a major scene. They don't.
I know they don't have a major...
And there's a reason why they don't.
Because it goes into the deal. We, they were the only people that applied.
No, I know. I'm just, I'm just telling you that optics are everything, and we shouldn't play. So, I'm sorry, I restated my point.
Optics, sure.
I, you know...
What?
I, as I said last year, and probably the year before that, I was also a pastor, still am ordained for a long period of time. That's what I did. I was in the ministry, and my original concerns went back to the law, which I ran into in nineteen eighty-two, eighty-three, as a pastor, and that law has subsequently been clarified. I kind of disagree with the comment, some of the comments that were stated, and faith, as a, whether you're a Christian or Mormon or whatever, is something to celebrate, it's something to exclaim, it's not you hide in your home.
Well, no, that's not what I'm saying.
I know, but you're saying it's okay for us to say it there in our home, but to not speak about it, our faith publicly, or display?
No, that's not what we're saying at all.
So, so we have residents that want to celebrate the holidays, and we know what they mean by the holidays. They're not generally just talking about Fourth of July and Halloween. They're generally talking, at least in my understanding, about the time period from Thanksgiving to the end of January, or middle of January, or whatever the twelve days of Christmas are, and all of that. They, they include all of it. So, in my opinion, and that's all I'm doing, is giving my opinion, that if we have residents that want to, to use a public park that has nothing to do with us, as a government group, why not?
It has everything to do with us as a government group, because taxpayers pays for that park.
All taxpayers pay.
I know, all of them do, but I'm just saying, you can't say it has nothing to do with government, because it does. Pepperfest Park is owned by taxpayers.
Oh, because we're maintaining it?
But again, there's tons of communities that have...
There are, I mean, all over the place.
And if you, if you, anybody that looked at the videos, they were, there was nativity scenes, there was, you know, "Let Christ light up your life," uh, signs, there's all kinds of stuff, Christian, and there's all kinds of stuff secular in every one of these displays that are around, you know, just this local area. And for, to not, uh, or to, you know, stop other, you know, we can't do this, you can, you know, I mean, I just,
I think there's a lack of communication about what the policy really meant. I mean, finding that form on the website is kind of tricky. People didn't know that it was open to everybody, just...
Well, I don't know how much we could explain it.
Well, they don't watch this broadcast, they don't read the meeting minutes, Stan.
Well, then they're probably not engaged in this either.
That's fine. I've made my points.
We run into that issue all the time, when people come and ask us something that we've clearly covered here. I mean, at what point is it their responsibility to be involved versus our responsibility to...
I'm just telling you.
Continually explain, explain?
That's why there's confusion. And if, we did say that it could be open to everybody, and say that we would have, allow other displays, even though they might not be something we want, like flying spaghetti monsters.
Yes.
It was discussed.
Yeah, we did.
Exactly.
But I don't know if people know that. So, that's where the, that's where that whole notion of looking like something else than it is.
Okay, well, this discussion tonight, I guess I'm calling the question here. It's about extending.
Yeah, it's a motion on the table about extending. It's nothing at this point that...
It has nothing to do with where we're talking.
I think we need to vote on that, if you want to make a decision there first.
Okay, the call, the question's been called, Kathy?
No.
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 Yes?
Yes.
And no.
Motion fails to extend the hours. Is there any other discussion on holiday display?
There's nothing else on the agenda, Brian.
Well, I mean, did, would we, would you entertain a motion to, uh, keep it, allow?
It's already allowed. We're not voting on that.
Well, that's what we kind of have to do, because we're reviewing the, you know, the temporary, you know...
Is that right, Paul?
Policy.
Yeah, I think everything's open. We're gonna review it and decide what we want to do with it.
Oh, okay.
I move to reconsider the policy of allowing holiday displays in the park.
I second.
Okay, discussion?
I think we've had it.
So, you want to, there's no holiday displays in the park? That's your motion?
Yep.
And that, you're good with that, Lori?
I second.
Okay. And, uh, any further discussion? Hearing done, uh, Tim?
I say no to that motion.
Brian?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Fails and tie.
Three, three tie, motion fails. There will be no holiday displays in Pepperfest.
No, I think it's the other way.
No, that means that it stays.
What?
It stays, it's still a motion. It stays in place.
Oh, it stayed, oh!
Right, I move to reconsider the policy.
Okay.
So, in case you didn't know.
So, it stays in place.
For the dates that we have listed.
For what's there now stays in place.
Okay.
You know, and, and I think there can be some clarification that, you know, I think the problem that we had was that, you know, there was one nativity scene sitting out there.
Correct.
You know, and you can have a nativity scene, but it should be, it should be clear that you're not promoting a religion by putting that out there. You can have those, but they should be incorporated in more of a secular display. And you can, you know, either in, hopefully, as Stan said, it gets more popular, so it's not just one display sitting there, and I think it would be appropriate to put some signage, disclaiming that, you know, North Hudson is promoting this.
Or website, or whatever, if anyone interested. Well, because people have to look at the website, which, you know, you don't get a lot of...
Sounds like that's too much to ask. It sounds like putting a sign up is probably prudent.
And I think sign, exactly, stating that, and then also stating who sponsored the display, because then it, it clarifies the situation.
Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, yeah.
Was there a limit on how many people could display up there and use power?
There is information about power. There's only two outlets available, so when they're gone, they're gone. But, you know, we can add some language saying they must put up a sign. The person doing it has to put up a sign, because the village doesn't have any involvement in, in it, so...
Okay.
Do we need to move that as a formal motion to...
To add.
Add those languages, or what, to get it to be approved?
To add that language to the policy, about they have to put up a sign?
We can, yeah. If you want to do that, I would...
So...
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll add the language in the policy, and any suggestions you have for that, we can discuss, right?
Mm-hmm.
And please let us, you know, what everybody thinks, you know, I mean, let Melissa know we can add it, yeah?
Yep, we want to vote on that.
Okay, so, we will have...
Do we vote on that?
Need to vote on that.
No, and to move on, add in the language?
We will have a, a vote right now on, uh, the, uh, how we're seeing the same with the, just with the language change. Kathy?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Item number six, uh, Brian, I think we're ready for you. Action requested by the Village of North Hudson Building Inspector Brian Wirt, approval requested. A is the adoption of an ordinance, zero-five, twenty-nineteen, adoption of Wisconsin Electrical Code, approval requested.
So, Melissa gave you a, a letter from a code-writing attorney down by Madison that actually understands the law change better than anybody else. Um, the state, as of January first, twenty-twenty, has changed the rules on commercial electrical inspections and ag building inspections, which we really don't have any ag buildings in the village, but it's part of their law. And so, what's gonna happen on January first is either the village becomes an electrical, commercial electrical inspection agency, and then appoints their own, uh, inspector, or the state will appoint one for you. And they go by the cheapest bid, just so you know. Um, we've been doing the electrical inspections up until this point. Um, the, the new law requires that I have a master electrician or a commercial electrical inspector, and we have, um, acquired a master electrician on staff now, because of this law change. So, the two options you have is do nothing, and the state will appoint someone to cover this village, or you adopt the ordinance, and, uh, along with that is, is becoming, uh, an electrical inspection agency, and then you can appoint whoever you want.
Okay. Well, Madison, Paul, you want to weigh in? Before we make any kind of bollocks in order?
I guess I, I agree with what you're saying. There's a process we have to go through. You know, first, we have to make a decision, the board has to make a decision if they're interested in doing it. If they decide yes, then they have to apply to become an inspection agency under the code and, and adopt a new ordinance.
Correct.
You know, that takes some time. I know there's this deadline of the end of the year coming up, which, you know, we're not gonna make the sixty days that they talk about in the statute. Uh, I'm not exactly sure how the state's gonna treat the municipalities that are sort of on the tail end of this.
They are way behind as of we speak, so...
It's approved in June, isn't it? Last night, the information you had that you sent to us, June was when initially this went through this ordinance?
Yeah, it might even been earlier than that. I really thought they were gonna extend it, because they're not, the, the state's not ready for it either.
Yeah. You know, I saw, you know, the model ordinance that you sent. We're gonna need to tweak that, because that's just some boilerplate out of a book. It needs to be adopted to function with, you know, the village code, but that certainly can be done. Um, if the board wants to proceed along those lines, we can gear up and, you know, certainly get the agency form application.
That's, that's the biggest, uh, deadline right now, is getting the agency done. Once we get the agency, then we can adopt the ordinance. I just thought it would be easier at one meeting to do everything, so...
So, we have to become the, uh, the village supposedly the agency?
Inspection agency, yes.
That's what they call it.
Are you gonna stick around for a while?
Seven years and ten months.
But who's counting?
But I'm not counting.
I'll be past my time, I'm glad, you know, that works for me.
You got that pretty nailed down there, bro.
The other boards will have to deal with that one, so let's see.
I'll have, I'll have people in place that you won't even notice.
That'd be, that'd be wonderful. You've done a good job so far, I believe, so, um, okay, so then we, uh, need a motion on this, huh?
Yeah, you're gonna need a motion to, I guess, approve filing the application to become an inspection agency, and that'll be the first step. Then, by the next meeting, we'll have an ordinance ready to go, and those can be adopted. And hopefully, in the meantime, we've heard back from the state.
Do we have to do anything with that delegated municipality as well?
That's a separate, a separate one.
So, two separate motions?
Or three?
Well, we can't do the ordinance part, because we don't have that.
Yeah, we can't adopt the ordinance tonight, but we can do that next month, once it's created.
Okay.
Six B.
So, we need a motion to create an ordinance to comply with the state?
Yeah, or just to start drafting it, you know, some direction to do that is fine. I don't know if you need a formal motion, but...
Well, we need one to approve the village to become an electrical inspection agency.
That you need.
Stan, I move to approve the village becoming an electrical inspection agency.
Second.
Thank you. Second, any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, uh, all in favor of the, uh, motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we start after the, uh...
Yep, there's some forms that need to be filed, and I...
That's one.
Yep.
Okay, what's the other one?
Delegated municipality.
Becoming a delegated municipality. Um, it, it's similar to that, it's not mandatory. Um, the state building inspector, Joe Merchak, covers about fifteen counties right now, and he would appreciate municipalities that have a commercial building inspector to become delegated, so he doesn't have to stop and inspect anything in our village. We've been doing all the inspections, he's just another layer, and, and it's, it's confusing to contractors that they have to call two inspectors. Um, and he may show up and he may not show up. Like I said, he covers way too big of an area to actually be an effective inspector anyways, so... Uh, the state will still do the plan reviews, and I'll just do all the inspections, as I've been doing anyways. This just gets him out of it.
So, that's what that means? That's what C means?
Yes.
So, it's a delegated electrical?
No, this is just a delegated municipality, and that comes with just the commercial building inspections completely.
Stan, I moved that the village of North Hudson becomes a delegated...
Municipality.
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 Second.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you Kathy. Um, any further discussion?
So then, you'll assume the responsibility, but you'll also organize the electricians and do the inspection type of deal?
That was the first one.
Oh.
This is, this is what we've been doing all along. It's just, um, allowing the state building inspector to not have to stop in North Hudson.
Okay, I see. Got it, thank you.
What's the third?
What's that?
The ordinance is the third.
The third is the ordinance?
And we'll have to come back with that.
We can't do that, we need to vote on this.
Oh, we didn't vote on this yet?
No, we didn't.
No, I was questioning that.
Delegated municipality, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of a village to become a delegated municipality, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Have a great evening.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. Okay, item seven, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, class A beer and class A liquor license and cigarette license for QuickTrip, approval requested.
It's actually tobacco license.
Yeah, that's a little motion on the agenda, it's a cigarette, though. One says tobacco.
Same thing.
Okay, is there a motion of any kind?
We need that, so we can have the conversation.
What's that?
We need that, so we can have the conversation.
Yes.
So, I move to approve the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, uh, class A beer and class A liquor license and cigarette license, QuickTrip, for QuickTrip, nine thirty-five.
It was a motion to approve?
Well, I, we need to have a motion on the floor. Well, I, we need to have a motion on the floor.
Right?
So.
No, I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm, I'm not hearing one.
No, I'm, I'm saying that to get the motion on the floor.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil, discussion?
So all of this came down today, right? So can we, can someone, like, summarize? Apparently that wasn't brought up in the planning commission meeting, that this was the intent.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the crux of the problem?
Yeah, the, uh, you know, the letters we got today from, you know, citizens, Lee also brought it up. The, uh, you know, the, in QuickTrip with their letter, you know, I mean, I was just made aware about that in September, I think, or barely in September, that, uh, they were going to, you know, apply for liquor license and beer license. It was not in their initial letter of intent, and so that's where the concern, I believe, has come. There's, uh, you know, we've got numerous village, uh, what have we got, six, I think, off sale licenses within two blocks. You know, the, uh, and, and the present liquor store there is, uh, what, a hundred and sixty feet off the, you know, property from QuickTrip. So, you know, the arguments you've seen in the, uh, or, or, you know, the concerns from the different board members, planning commission members, uh, uh, it's, uh, it's a concern for our local businesses, for sure.
So is the, go ahead.
Well, I was wondering, is the concern about the liquor license, or is the concern about the beer license?
Right, that was my question.
Liquor is the biggest concern that I've seen.
I guess, you know, and, and I was at the planning commission meeting too, and, you know, when they come in and say they're gonna do a convenience store, you know, and they're gonna sell beverages and things, I, I think the assumption is nowadays all convenience stores sell beer.
Right, that's what I thought too.
It's the fermented versus the alcohol, I think, Paul, that's the, you know, the intoxicating alcohol is two different things there. They're both class A because it's a convenience store. But I think it's the intoxicated side of it that, that causes the concern on my end, to be honest with you. I think it's more working, as, as public safety chair, I think it's more working our officers. I mean, honestly, because now you have to have another establishment that has to be checking for IDs and underage drinking. I, I don't, I mean, I, I see where we can't question the beer side of it, because we already have a current convenience store selling beer.
Correct.
But on the intoxicated side of it, I think we should definitely have a lot more discussion on that. And, um, I think, being that it came today to us, we saw it today. I think the timeline just didn't give us enough opportunity to really talk about this as a board.
I think we should table it.
But I mean, I also went out and looked at the, you know, our statutes, both state and local, and what we have, and since we don't have an ordinance, we're, we're somewhat limited here, I think, Paul, you know, but, um, I also think we just may need more discussion on it.
Correct, cause this is just coming, like, literally minutes before we meet, so we haven't really had time to consider.
What is coming minutes?
No, no, I mean this, like, today, these things.
The emails?
Yeah.
I think Paul can expand a little bit on our ordinance too, that.
Well, you know, the village doesn't have any ordinance restricting that. You know, under the, under the state law, which sort of defaults back to the state law, you know, the village has the power to approve or deny, but it has to have a legitimate reason to do that.
Right, right.
And I guess that comes down, you know, to a fact question, whether or not, you know, that's a legitimate reason to say, I like business A and I don't like business B. So, you know, and I'm not gonna say one way or the other, that's not for me to decide, but if a decision is made, it needs to be based on some facts and some legitimate reasons to be supportive. You know, there are a number of establishments that sell liquor right in that general area. So I think it's difficult to say that that's not an appropriate area for people to be selling.
Right.
Beer and liquor. You know, I think in a, you know, Brian and I had some emails today. I think the village does need to look at amending or improving or modifying their ordinances in this regard to deal with these situations.
Melissa did some fact checking too on other municipalities, and many of them have an ordinance in place limiting how many class A licenses are, are given out based on population.
You know, the, the issue is that, you know, we have an application before us now. And that should be dealt with based on the rules in place now. And then we should, if the board wants to, have the discussion. And I'm not saying you have to approve it based on the rules now, or you have to deny it, but if we're gonna go and start amending ordinances, the time to do that is.
Is not now, yeah.
Right.
Right, but there, in, looking through different, you know, case law and stuff that, that there's been, there's numerous cities and municipalities that have denied the, the license and the fact that, in fact, in Madison, on five hundred State Street, they denied a license because we have enough liquor establishments in that area. The same entity applied on a different address and were approved. So, the, right now, in, in with the, the businesses that are there, they, you know, Lee expressed it, Kim couldn't be here, but they, they believe that we've got enough places selling liquor in that, you know, hard liquor and stuff in that short block, that, uh, you know, it'll, it, it could definitely affect their, you know, their businesses.
And a lot of times, there's wording in the ordinance that says that, though.
Right.
That they can deny it, it's in their ordinance, we just don't have anything in there that says that.
And I guess I don't know what, what Quick, QuickTrip's business plan is, I know, like in River Falls, they sell liquor, and it's about.
In Richmond, they sell.
It's about three shelves behind the cashier.
Right.
And that's the intentions in here, yeah.
I got pictures of what it would look like.
You wanna come up and make, you know, I mean, since you're here, I mean, give the statement, but I mean, as far as the pictures, you know, that could help the board some, I guess.
Yeah, um, I'll help you as best as I can.
Yep, you dropped some bulbs. You're gonna need those, especially next week.
Need them now.
Take care.
So I'm Ben Lenzen, I'm the, gonna be the store leader at the North Hudson QuickTrip location. And, um, I just have some images of what we would put in as far as, um, our, our wine and liquor selection. Should I just hold them up, or?
Yeah, that, you know, I think the cameras can see that.
That would be the extent of our liquor, it would be behind the counter secured. Couple shelves behind the counter, basically. This would be the extent of our, our wine selection in the store.
So can, can you clarify that class A fermented and class A intoxication, um, license? Isn't the fermented, doesn't it include the wine and beer?
Um, the, uh, fermented.
For class A, uh, and, and fermented?
It has to say fermented malt beverage on.
Right.
Can or whatever.
Cider beers.
Cider.
So the intoxicating side of license goes with the wine and the?
The wine and the, so cider beer, wine and the liquor, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So Freedom has class A.
Beer and cider.
Which would be the fermented.
It, yeah, but it has to say fermented on that.
Right, right.
Yep.
Okay, all right, sorry to interrupt you, but thank you.
No, that's, that's fine, I guess if there's other questions, otherwise.
There's nothing presenting, uh, preventing you, once you have the license, from expanding it inside the store, right?
Nope, we have our designated spots, um, that's, it, we hold that same footprint for those items in all our stores. These images are actually from the new Menominee location that just opened up.
That didn't answer my question.
I'm sorry, what?
There's nothing preventing you, once you have the license, from expanding your liquor sales inside the building?
That, there's no plans of, of that nature, I s-
Well, as far as plans, I was a little surprised that your VP, when he came here, never mentioned it to our planning commission and didn't mention it to this board, they were planning on selling that. It was all food, food, food.
And I can't speak to what they, they said in those meetings. All I know is that, you know, on our plans, um, we do have a beer cave, you know, marked on there, and, um, I know that's clearly marked on there, so.
That was marked on the, for the planning commission to see?
Uh, I, I know on the plans, that like the, the floor plans that I have had access to, I guess I don't know what, what was given to you guys. So from the planning side of things, I, I can't be of much help to you, just cause I wasn't in attendance of those.
Understood, thank you.
Meetings, yep.
Okay, so the motion was to?
Tape.
Approve, cause I.
Approve.
Cause that's what was on the.
Okay, and, uh, that's to prove the whole works, yes? Okay.
That's what the motion states. That's what the motion is on the floor.
Well, and that's just recommended wording, you guys can change it to what you want.
Right.
Right. That was to open discussion.
And you can, you can also deal with them separately, if you want to deal with them separately.
You can?
We can, really? Okay.
The license?
Well, there's class A beer, there's class A liquor, and then there's a cigarette license, they're three separate licenses.
So I can withdraw my motion, is that what can happen? Or what?
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, depending, I'm just trying to give some options.
No, I'm with you, I'm just trying to get the parliamentary procedure hoops.
Yeah.
So, what's the best way to do that?
You could, you know, you could withdraw it.
I'll withdraw it, then. Then you guys can move what you want.
And then address them separately?
If you want to, yeah, you could have a motion addressing them separately, or you can handle it that way.
Okay, is it?
I think he can. He can sit down now?
I believe so, yeah.
Sorry, Ben.
Stand him up there for that long? Well, I don't know, maybe we're gonna hammer him out, you know, so. But, uh, okay, is there, so, uh, the motion's been withdrawn, is there, uh, anyone who'd like to address them separately, make a motion? Or we table it till next month, uh?
They do open this month, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, I know, they're opening in a couple of weeks, that's the, you know, and that's, I, I think is the, it's probably the part that, uh, is a little bit concerning for everybody, is that we didn't know about this until, uh?
But do you think, I just have a question. If, if we, if they would've told us this when they, when they did their plans, would it have changed our approval of QuickTrip?
Well, I would.
Or, I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I'd like to come back to QuickTrip and maybe have some more discussions with them on some of it, you know?
I just wanted to know.
And I know QuickTrip did call, and they said they didn't see anything in our codebook that said they couldn't apply for it, so they applied for what?
Yep.
They could, because we didn't have anything saying no.
Exactly.
So I will speak to that. They applied for, because they did look at our codebook, didn't see anything, so they applied for what they could.
Yeah, they're gonna be a neighbor like everyone else, and I just want to have an open discussion with them, you know?
Well, right.
So, you know, the QuickTrip in Hudson does not have liquor or beer.
That's because they didn't have enough. They limit by population.
Right.
Cause they have, they, cause they have ordinance.
Right, but that's why they don't.
It all comes back to that, doesn't it? It all comes back to the ordinance, that we don't.
Yeah, no, and that's, you know, I mean, I'm sure that will be addressed in the future months, I'm pretty sure. So, uh, again, uh, request, uh, for any kind of motion on any, the, you know, you could make the cigarette license one, I mean, uh, the beer one, I mean.
I motion to move the tobacco license for the QuickTrip.
I second.
Okay, is there a discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the cigarette license being approved, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Is there, uh, any motion on the class A beer or class A liquor license? I'm recusing myself, because I work for a competitor, so I can't make any comments on this, so, uh, it's, would be a conflict, definite conflict of interest for me, as far as I'm concerned, so, I mean, the class A beer?
I would move the class A beer, cause it puts them on the same plane as Freedom.
Freedom, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the class A beer being approved, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
I'm recusing myself.
I'm abstaining.
Sorry.
I'm abstaining for the same reason.
Okay. So that is approved, uh, class A liquor license, is there a mo, is there a approval or a motion? Class A liquor license, is there a?
I would like to table that, if we could pass it away to the next meeting.
So we can have more.
I, uh, okay, table, is there a twenty, a second?
Yeah, you do, I'll second it.
Okay, and you seconded it? Okay, uh, motion's been made and seconded on tabling the class A liquor license. Uh, all in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining again.
Let the record show that Brian and Stan have abstained, and we will, we'll have to have a cover over that until we can further discuss it, Ben, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's, next item on the agenda, new business from the, uh, from the border staff, president's comments. First of all, I'd like to address, uh, there's been some issues I've been made aware of, apparently on social media. Uh, there's been posts regarding our new animal control officer, and, uh, in the contract with the village of North Hudson. Uh, the, uh, issue, I mean, he, uh, Darryl Hall is who we approved the last, uh, at the last month's meeting. He is, uh, the animal control warden for nine other towns and municipalities in, in this area. Uh, the, he, uh, and with our contract, he has, is, is, uh, to bring all animals that he picks up in the village to the Woodbury Humane Society so that they will be, uh, taken care of over there. The, uh, social media posts have mentioned that he takes the dogs and puts them in his garage and doesn't take care of them and/or whatever, uh, but, uh, and I cannot address yea or nay on that, but, you know, so everything you read on spacebook isn't necessarily true, so I hope everybody will be aware of that, and, uh, that in our contract with him, uh, you know, he deals a lot with the Amory, uh, uh, Humane Society and stuff with this, cause he's up, you know, in the Star Prairie area, so he, uh, he's licensed and, uh, and he is under contract to make sure our animals could go to Woodbury and, you know, and not back up to his home and, you know, where that's at. Uh, the second thing, or a couple of other things, just for the president's comments, uh, I hope everyone remembers on, uh, November eleventh is Veterans Day, it's a Monday. I know the, the VFW and the American Legion, they have a very nice ceremony up at, uh, the St. Craig County Courthouse, usually at eleven, uh, AM. And, uh, the schoolchildren are there to sing to everyone and, and honor the veterans. It's a very nice, uh, memorial for them. And then also, I'd like to say, I hope everyone has a safe and happy Thanksgiving, uh, that's coming up, end of the month. Oh, and a safe and happy hunting season, you know, beware of your target and what is beyond it. Melissa?
The elections for the seventh congressional district have been changed from the December and, um, I can't, January dates. So the special primary for the seventh congressional district will be held February eighteenth of tw- twenty twenty. Then the special election, uh, will be held on May twelfth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Mike, you've been patient enough, uh, planning commission recommendations. Thank you for attending.
Good evening. We had a planning commission meeting on October sixteenth, we had one item. A conditional use permit application for Joshua Rosenwinkel for an independent indoor auto dealership at two thirty-five Monroe Street, which is down the shopyards in, uh, Bugatti Building. This is, Mr. Rosenwinkel is here today. Um, we, it was a public hearing, there was one member of the public there, Todd Gilbert, who, uh, has a business down there. And his concerns were about safety, especially traffic, and we discussed traffic quite a bit. And when all was said and done, his, his auto dealership business model is, it, the cars are stored indoors, it's pretty much internet driven, and it's appointments, so there's not a lot of traffic.
It's pretty much internet-driven and it's appointments, so there's not a lot of traffic down there. The other thing he stated was by law, when someone wants to take a test drive, he has to accompany them. So they won't be tooling around the shopyards. They'll be leaving. And so, let's see, was there any other safety concerns? No. That was mainly it. The Plan Commission did recommend approval with the following conditions. You have that on your list. The last one, condition eight, was parking shall be documented on a site plan for approval by the village board. Mr. Rosenwinkel has submitted that. That was one of the things that we talked about quite a bit because on the Plan Commission, we really like to see plans. But since the real, the whole thing was, well, where are you going to park these two or three cars for you and the people visiting? It really wasn't that big an issue when you consider a dance studio has 40 cars parked right across the street. So that's where we left it. It was not a unanimous vote, but it was all but one, I believe.
Any additional security?
I'm sorry.
Was it any additional security within the building itself? I mean.
Oh, yeah. The building itself, he, he, he has to, like it says in the conditions, he has to comply with all the codes. There's a lot of fixing up to do.
Okay.
They started something. He doesn't own the building, so he has to get approval, you know, to do things so he can fix things up. Yeah, you, you can't go into business till all the conditions are met. And it's all the fire stuff and, uh, we know it's a junky kind of area down there, and he's already started to do some of the cleanup. And the condition, like number five property kept clean with no outside storage of any kind. All the vehicles will be inside, no garbage and everything. So a lot of people thought that was a good thing.
So is it the entire L building or just the end of the L building?
Just the end, right?
Just the end.
The big windowed?
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions?
That's all I got.
Yeah.
I think it's a cool idea.
So we need to.
Okay. Now I guess we need a motion.
Am I approving, are we motioning on the?
Was a parking plan submitted?
That, there's separate pictures that were, they're out there on the website that he submitted.
And are we basically motioning on the CUP?
Yes. Yep.
With those conditions.
Stan, I move to approve the CUP for Midwest Foreign Imports, Inc. at 235 Monroe Street North with the conditions that are listed in front of us.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Phil. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the conditional use permit for Josh at the independent indoor auto dealership? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay. Next, claims, personal finance committee recommendations, claims approval requested.
Stan, I still moved to approve the November night, 2019 non-recurring claims of $274,584.66.
Thank you. Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions? It's a big number this month because of debt service and the lift station down at.
East Bank.
East Bank. And everything else is pretty much normal for, for that. And that's, any other questions? None? Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, assignment of unassigned funds for the future purchase of Public Works vehicles. Police Department Squad, approval requested.
Stan, I move to authorize the village administrator to transfer 15,000 to the Public Works Truck Assigned Fund and 15,000 to the public, to the Police Department Vehicle Assigned Fund from the unassigned fund balance.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none. That's just a movement funds. I don't need a roll call. So all in favor of moving the funds? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item C, assignment of remaining funds in the dam maintenance account for future repairs. Approval requested.
Stan, I recommend to transfer the remaining balance in the dam maintenance account to an assigned fund to be used for future repairs of the Willow River Lower Dam.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, everyone.
We all want to second the dam motion.
I don't know who seconded the dam motion, but, but it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of moving the funds to the cover future repairs? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item D, review of proposed 2020 annual budget. Discussion only.
You have a copy of the bu, the proposed budget that was out there. This is the publication that goes in the paper that we do, do every year, and it summarizes between 19 and 20. It already did get published for the public hearing, for the budget hearing. And just some highlights of it, this budget does include one additional police officer. This was possible due to money saved from the previous EMS contract. There's an additional 2% to the library that was requested. And then there's a large use of available funds. A lot of that's coming from the year end this year because we are down one or two officers. We got a better interest rate on our operating account. There's various reasons why. But a lot of that money is just being assigned for purchase, capital purchases for next year. So those are the highlights of it. There's nothing to approve. It's just the discussion. If anybody has questions at the budget hearing, I'll go over it in more detail.
Yeah. On the 19th, we have the budget hearing, correct?
Yes.
At 5:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Number 11, Public Works Committee Recommendation. Brian?
So Stan, on the chair update part here, I'm just reminding, or letting the folks know down on Galahad that we have completed the drainage issue down there, at least currently to the best of our ability. We've done the cleanup. And then we had someone come in and scoop out the ditch. So now if it overflows from the area that was overflowing, the shopyards before, there is now a ditch that's been cleaned out that should run it to the south and towards our, what is it, down there in the south? Storm sewer.
Storm sewer, yeah.
I would like to mention, however, that as of yesterday, one of our neighbors down there completely filled it with leaves blown right across the road. And so would really appreciate the neighbors policing themselves on that because it doesn't help us to create a ditch if you're going to fill it back up.
Item B?
Item B, purchase of the Public Works truck. Stan, I'd like to move to purchase slash build a 2020 Ford F-150 from Hudson Ford with price not to exceed $35,500. The funds are to come from Public Works Vehicle Assigned Fund to be delivered and it to be delivered in 2020.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Purchase of a new truck. Kathy?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Number C is snow plow contract.
Stan, I'd like to move the approval of the snow removal, uh, snow slash ice removal contract between the village of North Hudson and Zappa Brothers for the period of October 2019 through October 2020.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second? Thank you, Phil. Discussion? Well, I just like made comment that contracted Gary and stuff, we, yeah, we're short, you know, shorthanded. We lost another Public Works employee and he left us. So we are just hedging to make sure that we have enough people plowing because the forecast that we're getting right now, it's, we're probably going to need them. So, and before we get, you know, extra equipment, I think this is a good, a good contract. So all in favor of the contract? Signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? In unanimous. Thank you. Item D, purchase of metal detectors.
Stan, I'd like to move to purchase two rigid brand metal detector slash locators from Ferguson Water Works with price not to exceed $1,950 with money to be used from the 220 fund.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Lori. Is there comments or?
So what do we use these for? I think just for, I know, but people in the.
Oh, for.
Our captivated viewers.
What, what do we need the metal detectors for? Patrick, Patrick? Let's see your smiling face on TV. Your son love it.
So we use the metal detector locators or locators for general, most of the time finding the curb stops. So that's where, that's our valve, the city's valve that would shut the water off to your home if you had a leak or something like that. We also use it to find stuff, metal stuff, valves, what have you. Something that gets covered up by landscaping or whatever. We've used them before to do stuff like that. So it doesn't have a single use. It's got a few multiple uses. So that's, that's about all it does.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
Patrick.
Give questions?
No, he's going to be needed on the next one.
Oh, okay. Well, there's this exercise program going back and forth, you know? Not that he doesn't get enough at, you know, work, but. Okay, so purchase of metal detectors, Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next one, purchase of water testing equipment, approval requested.
Stan, I'd like to move to purchase the DR 900 color meter with case sampling packets and vials from HAC with price not to exceed $1,800 with money to be used from the 220 fund.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
You want to explain what it's used for?
Yeah, we use that, we use that meter for new, new services or investigative sampling. It checks the chlorine levels, residual total chlorine levels. It'll also test for iron. And that I use in the process of when we're hooking up a new service. I check those levels and then I take a back T sample and bring it up to the lab. So they say it's okay that we can turn the water on for them.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Patrick? Hearing none. Thank you, Patrick. You can enter your chair and we'll start with Kathy.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety Committee Recommendations. Tim, you got anything for us?
Yes, Sam, we have one thing to move to the board. We have a motion to authorize the subscription of a contract with Central Square Technologies for the Central Square Pro Software quoted for North Hudson Police Department with initial payment to be made from our 2019 Police Department budget.
Second, Tim? Did I have a second already?
Second.
You didn't even have one. Thank you. Uh, any comments, questions or?
Chief, you want to add any conditional comments to this, especially the information about the county?
Yeah, the Public Safety Committee heard this at their meeting, and as I mentioned to the Finance Committee earlier today, there was some information on whether or not the county was going to move forward with their part of the subscription package. And their board met earlier today and as part of their budgetary process moved forward with this, with this project. So they will be, they have the, the largest sum, if I look at the breakdown, St. Croix County, between their emergency services and their sheriff's office, they're close to $200,000 in this. Our amount is $3,750 currently. That may change a little bit depending on the, what the cost comes in with an additional user as far as another officer goes. But again, if our total amount is 3,750, it's not going to be a big change. But it was very important that the county move forward because they have lump sum of the investment, if you will. And we are kind of a user within their larger group. There was some conversation at the Finance Committee about the, kind of the forcing upon municipalities of this process. And, and I, I can tell you that from a lot of our perspectives, the county was very open to feedback from municipalities, from police departments. This will include some fire departments and EMS groups in the St. Croix County area that are also going to be utilizing the software. And it's locked, the current subscription pricing will be locked in for the first five years. And then after that, I believe the, the contract is about a four and a half percent increase for maintenance every year after that, that you stay with it, but it'll be an annual option, I guess, to look in other places. So currently will be locked in at that price, once we get the contracts put together, which are still forthcoming. It'll be locked in for five years. And that's currently, the amount there is, is just about $940 more than what we were spending on the maintenance for the old program, which had been in place since 1999 and had been, had some moderate adjustments and upgrades. And this will be quite a significant change that will benefit us, as I mentioned in the issue statement, in quite a few ways.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Hearing none. Let's see, it's a contract and we're going to spend some money on it, Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay. Next, item 13 is public welfare and the chair is not here and they did not meet.
No, they did not.
Item 14 is product board committee. They had a meeting called, but they did not have a quorum. So the meeting was canceled. And now item 15 is convening to close session for A. Board may convene into closed session per statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating and negotiating whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require. And per 19 dash, or point eight five, parent one, parent G, to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy. The governing body may adopt in litigation, which the village is likely to become involved regarding termination of existing EMS contract services with Hudson. And the second one, B, is in addition, the board may convene into closed session per 19.851E for the purpose of delivering and negotiating whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require regarding the fire contract with the city of Hudson. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, and all in favor of the closed session? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.